What do you think is to apply in the United States of America? Just through the Republican Party, which stands on a mission. God into this law, it's a justice program.
Is there any additions to our agenda?
Why, yes, there are. A contact release, two resignations, ten new contracts, authorize administration to circulate in RFP for board certified behavior analyst services, authorize administration to circulate RFP for mental health therapy services, and authorize administration to circulate in RFP for targeted case management services.
And then you also wanted, you wanted to change the order of the agenda to put tax incentive to the end, is that what you decided?
For the last action under the action items.
Yes.
So, seeing the week on E.
Correct. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I would also, one more request is that we would begin with the OE nine. Second, do the cybersecurity. Third, the staffing. And fourth, the incentive.
Okay. Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda for tonight's meeting as mentioned.
All right. Jessica, is there any discussion agenda? All right, all those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign? Motion carries. All right, our first one, we have resident for our recognitions and presentations. We have our learner advisory board seniors here.
Yes.
Tricia, do you want to go ahead?
So, welcome to our seniors. Do you guys want to stand? Thank you. And it's Seth.
Yep.
And Sydney.
And.
And me, Seth as well.
Seth. Okay. And Olivia.
Yeah.
Right, so welcome. These are the individuals that have been appearing on our learner advisory board. Do you guys want to tell us about your after high school? No pressure.
I actually started today at the University of North Dakota. I'm doing online for the summer semester and then I will be out August 4. I will be doing a double major in early childhood education and special education.
And Olivia, you've served on this board for, since its inception. Kind of one of the people that helped get things going. So is that three years now?
Three years.
Third years. Yeah.
I plan to attend the University of Utah. I'm not too sure I'll major yet. I know I can become a scientist, but just follow the right of the team. And yeah, in my education, it was out there. Man of the youths.
I'll be traveling out to Phoenix, Arizona and going to Grand Canyon University. I'll be majoring in medical lab sciences with an emphasis in treatment. Yeah, I thought they were lucky.
Thanks.
I plan on attending the University of North Dakota and majoring in medical library sciences. And then after those four years, I plan on going to dental school with the main goal of becoming orthodontist.
Well, thank you so much for participating in the advisory board. We heard lots of great information coming from those and really do appreciate your time and wish you the best as you move on to the next level. Any questions, anyone who has any questions, we will put them on the hot spot there.
I think we already did.
I was wondering, what would be one piece of advice you would give to incoming freshmen coming in? High school.
To have fun, finish off with souls.
Mine would be to join as many clubs as possible and find what you're interested in.
I would say work hard, make friends, and get a lot of your college classes out.
It's really basic, but honestly enjoy everything. Like it really does so.
Well, thank you guys so much. You're welcome to say, but you don't have to.
Thank you so much. It's been a pleasure getting to know all of you. I appreciate your honest responses and dialogue that you share with us. Believe it, it helps, helps. You don't realize it, but as we're making decisions, your voices pop into my head, but your thoughts. So I appreciate that. Wish you the best. I would love to see what's in that.
Oh, yeah.
Open them up, let's see what it is.
You can open them. It won't be rude.
Great.
You told me, but I haven't seen them.
Oh, yeah, cool.
Oh. And then the sleeve.
What did it say on the sleeve, Olivia? Oh, cool. They said founding members.
Awesome.
Those are great.
Your stuff.
Yeah.
Thank you guys.
Very fun.
Well, best wishes, don't be strangers. We'll call on you to come back and tell us what you can get in your way a little bit. You can give us advice on what we can be doing better to carry you once you get into those different environments.
Yeah, complete a request for a photo if you guess.
Oh, great. Yeah. So the board? Do you want to do it?
It's moving.
There's a whole bunch of boxes here. Now we're gonna start.
Heather take charge.
We want all in the photo, the board.
The board?
And should be there too.
Heather said, you're so soft.
I could if you would like.
Sure, yes, absolutely. Show me your fancy, fancy phone. My phone that have a camera there. Somebody has one. Right. It was like, well, you need something. I can go look for a camera. I'll be one of the way down.
Neither one, okay. I just had Tricia's camera, so I'm gonna take an efficient picture.
Okay, who has?
I don't have a story.
Is he a story?
Whoa. No. Sweet. I'm always in the back. You need to be in the future. Okay, because everybody else stayed in that place. So I just wanted to get it moving. Okay, I can fill you.
No, that's okay. I just saw it and I was like, oh, no.
No, you're right. I did advise Erica.
Okay, perfect. But thank you for checking it. Yes, I saw it, I was like, should I take that off? Normally, yes. We're gonna let this one go.
Yeah.
Okay.
That was the person.
Do you want something else? Sorry, I hope that's okay. No, it's very. It looks like it might go that way. Yeah.
Thank you for taking over, you guys, to join the fun.
All right. So we're gonna, onto our actual minions and we're gonna do, I mean, we take action on OE nine, starting in March.
That we will call Annie Richards to lead the work. This has been a work in progress and she's done a great job identifying some key adjustments.
Yeah, so just kind of some background. We've been working on not just OE nine, but also the strategy map as well as DR one. And our goal has been to align those three so that what we say we're doing and what we're actually doing and then what we're measuring all align. And so it's been kind of a labor of love this year. We've had a collaborative group called the Wellness Committee, because we all like to be well, who've been really digging into these reports. And so the policy changes that you see here in red reflect our goal of aligning policy language from DR one to the strategy map to OE nine. And so some of you have had the opportunity to see a triangle that looks like our MTSS triangle. And at the bottom, it says educator wellness. And then it says safe and supportive environments. And then in the three sections, it says, talks about positive relationships and restorative practices, positive behavior supports, and then mental health literacy and social emotional learning. And so this language comes from our desire to map what that triangle looks like in these reports. And so you can see, the first one is ensure school operations promote environments that are safe, supportive, and culturally responsive. Second is maintaining a climate that is characterized by support and advocacy for the social and emotional health of all learners. Three, ensure educators establish and maintain relationships in a learner centered environment where learners experience a sense of community that demonstrates respect for the diversity of each learner and makes them feel valued. And four, maintain a climate that is characterized by the support of organizational and educator well being. So I'll open up the floor at this time for any questions.
You'll also see in the consent agenda, the key indicators that we identified. Do you want to speak to any of those at all?
Yeah, so we did some work to help align those indicators. So it reflects the work that our staff are doing or that West Fargo as an organization is doing to meet these goals. And so an example might be under number one, confirmation that we will be providing Equity 201 as a training to all of our educators at some point in their professional learning journey. We also talk about the implementation of social emotional learning across for all learners. We also talk about under relationships, our goal to have restorative practices in all of our buildings and to have one, at least one staff member who is trained. And then under organizational wellness, we talk about some pieces that maybe are not directly aligned with educator wellness in the way that we've discussed it in the past, but that will help support organizational wellness and promote transparency and communication. So you can see that up for me. You can see some of those changes to the indicators as well. So really looking at reporting on how our systems are doing and is our system set up for learner and educator wellness.
And so you said this aligns with desired results one?
So that, that's our goal. It's, we weren't able to get a straight line for everything, but I hope to see or to be able to show when we do DR one, which will be in August. So that'll be fresher in our minds with OE nine coming up, that we'll be able to see those results. So if you go up, Alicia. Go up, one more. Okay, yep, so like under this one, for example, we're looking at equity and inclusion practices, trauma informed practices, that this all connects then with what we'll see in terms of when we have this, the sister policy statement in DR one, then you'll see some of those results as well. Or the impact on learners.
I think one thing that we try to do in this is to leave, to put things in place so things aren't left to chance. So for example, the decision making matrix, you know, a cultural killer or a trust problem is if people don't know where decisions are being made. It comes up consistently. And it is this fall, I'm decision making matrix. And I was asked to just give you a little overview of it at the end of the meeting today. But it's just really looking at where are the decisions being made and then having clarity around that. And so now there is a key indicator that says the district will have a decision making matrix and each school will have one with clarity and input from the teachers and the people that work there about how that's happening. So it won't be, if something would happen to me or somebody else comes in, you know, this is an expectation that every school would have that. Another example of that is the count around survey. We don't necessarily say it always did the count around survey, but we will have survey results that is measuring our educated wellness and that it will be a guarantee that the superintendent will share the results with staff from the survey as well as steps towards improving organizational educator wellness. Yeah, so just trying to be, again, so things aren't left to chance, they happen. Would those decisions, matrices be put on the line where either like a staff member within the school or like a family to look to see if they had a concern about a decision, then that would help them figure out like who is responsible for it? They haven't, it's been more of an internal. You know, a lot of our questions, not to say that it couldn't be, it, it might be. But for example, if you're looking at professional development and there is a block in time that is for compliance, that is a district decision. And we can get all the input in the world, but if it's a law, we have to do it. Sure. And then there's other decisions such as the choice boards for professional development that align with some of our initiatives. That, that could be more of a district or a building decision. And then even an educator decision, they get to choose what they're. So just bringing clarity to what are things that are policies and laws and districts decided, might be by the board, it might be by the state, it might be by the federal government. And what are the things that we can, we can control ourselves? And a lot of people don't know those things, like how many minutes are required in a day or minutes required in a year or there's just so many things that people, so just bringing clarity to that. But I have noticed already that the decision making matrix is a little bit of a work in progress because, and we can talk about that at the end, but it's, it is a work in progress because sometimes it was maybe at one point a building decision to take on a new initiative with our Title One grant. But over time, it became a system decision because it had such bad loose results that administrators and teacher leaders came together and made a decision that this is going to be something that we're all going to do. It's good. So things do move in and out in categories throughout the process. But I was, to your point about, I think strengthening relationships by having as much clarity as possible beyond just staff, I think more so about the community, the more information and clarity that can be about decision making, hopefully helping to strengthen relationships between the district and the community. Very good point. And this, this, the documents we created at the beginning of the year was input from teacher leaders and principals and others. Again, was our first year doing it, but it really has helped and I think that could be a next step. Might look a little bit different.
Sure.
May not talk about, it may not need to be all things.
Right, yeah.
Right. Is there something?
Right.
Yeah. And I think that's great, but I would imagine it would probably work best if it is flexible and does respond, you know, and just with the version adjusted to what works best. Other questions for OE nine for forty nine? Again, Annie, can you talk just briefly about who helped with these changes? Who were the individuals?
So we had a team of administrators, building administrators, as well as district leaders who all had their eyes on this and helped contribute to this. And that was, it was a lot of fun. We require a lot of zooming out because we can all kind of stay in our own lane when we're looking at projects like this. And so it was really fun to be able to zoom out with some of those building principals and look at, okay, how would this look in your building? If we were doing a report just on your building, what would we want to show? How would we show this? And so it was really fun to have those conversations and get that input. And we had some really valuable discussions.
Did you include any educators?
Not directly in this part. We increased educator engagement with some of our strategy map development. And so portions of this, but not with the policy language itself.
Number four is crucial. Okay. There, number eight.
Yep.
And I think that comes back to, again, some of those indicators that I think are a way to measure that that aren't just left to chance, they're in there.
I think what we're hoping to see with this too is that alignment as both Annie and superintendent Sully talked about of not leaving things to chance. So oftentimes when we do our strategy map, which is every year we do activities underneath each of our three goals. It's one of the wellness category. This time of the year, we're trying to wrap things up. We would never want a principal to say, oh, I forgot about that. And now it's May and they haven't been working on it. So to align the operational expectations, the desired results and the strategy map over the summer, what will happen is each building creates their own strategy map and they take it off of ours. So it's that complete alignment. So they're not just pulling things out of the sky that are just random. So it makes us all aligned with that. And our hope is when we present our DRs in the fall, as Annie said, then the building will like be able to say, well, this is the current barometer, temperature of the district. What does that look like at our building? Because they should have something connected to that. So we're really hoping to connect all the dots because it's busy stuff. You lose it sometimes.
And that work, you said the building administrators, but that's the leadership teacher.
The state based leadership teams meet in the summertime when they don't have learners on site. Thank you for that.
And the district strategy map is developed in collaboration with specifically the state lead educators or some of those positions, counselors, social workers, et cetera. That help develop those.
Just move on to OE nine.
Get ready in two weeks. It's gonna be so good. I will approve the latest changes to board policy OE nine and environmental students.
I will second that.
Thank you, Jessica, thank you, Tricia. Is there any discussion? Discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion carries. I realized that we just skipped over government, so I guess we'll be talking about. Which is what we talked about this, in the meantime. So next we're gonna do, review and take action on computer science and cybersecurity. For that, Mr. Williams is on the office space. So Heather has agreed to come and tell us all about it.
Thank you. And Denise Jonas is here too. And both Denise and the coordinator that works with her, Ryan, were an integral part of this. So we are here today because House Bill thirteen ninety-eight said that the school board shall approve our computer science and cybersecurity plan prior to July first. So we're here in May, in case you don't like this plan, we have to come up with a new one. But hopefully you'll be good with what we have done. So we did move into an integrated plan. You have, why don't you just stop on page three in terms of a visual? But we were allowed to like make it its own course at each level or integrate it into our courses. And we were able to integrate it very well. The caveat to that is we do have to have somebody who is certified. So we will be spending this next school year, all of our K five media specialists will spend all of their choice board time and all of their customized time during professional learning, getting certified in CSCS training. So we didn't have anyone else at the elementary level who had that completed. That adds up to fourteen hours, it's fifteen, so we have to figure out one more hour, but that's our plan for them. And they were fine with it. It really integrates really well with what they already do. So they cross mapped those pieces and came to that conclusion. In six eight, we are utilizing our teachers who teach our project lead the way courses. They are already certified. And so just documenting and making sure our learners are in those. That did require us to make a schedule change at the middle level because we had a number of learners who were in an intervention for academics who were missing those encore classes. And so we had to move some things around to make that happen. And we still are working on exactly how we're going to approach just a few of the safety and security, whether that's gonna land in advisory. They just finished meeting on middle school advisory last Wednesday. Or if it's gonna be an integrated library lesson or what that's gonna look like. But we'll plan to get that all flushed out. We are not responsible for the implementation of this until twenty five, twenty six. However, in the high school, we landed on it happening in the junior year. So these kiddos have to have it for their graduation in the spring of twenty six. And so we needed to have their, their part solid. And so we are utilizing a set of modules from Ignite that are provided by somebody who already is trained and certified. And the kids will take part in that during their junior level advisory periods. So we're really working on advisory time for all levels, all grade levels, but starting with nine and eleven this year. So we're working on a freshman experience you might care more about, as well as the cybersecurity for our juniors. And then there's plans for ten and twelve as well. So that is how they're gonna get it. They'll be able to work through those modules. And of course, there, we offer a ton of electives. So there's all kinds of things where kids can go deeper, but this will be the floor of what everybody gets. If you look at the next map, this is the really messy one on the next page where, not messy, but full. So the pink for the primary, that's what's happening in library media. The mint for the middle school, that's what's happening in PLTW. And then the lavender for our kids who are leaving in high school are integrated into their advisory time. And then there's a bunch that's noted in gray, although I can't tell the difference on this screen between gray and lavender. That one's a little better. I mean, my glasses. Those are integrated into their math and science courses. So there are a lot of these standards that fit very well in our core math and science where we didn't have to separate them out. That's how we're able to do it in advisory because they're just in the core classes that we require. So you can see at the bottom of this page is just a little specification about what's happening at the junior level, what they'll go through in each quarter with those different units and modules and what they'll be working on. Of course, always starting off the year with appropriate use policy, right, Ed? We remind them all of the good things they need to do for tech. And then getting into what is cybersecurity and moving through the school year with that. That is really it, but what questions do you have?
Let's take one for something so simple.
Right? How much time is invested by the learners into this whole? It really depends on the level, right? So I mean, we had already made some shifts to our elementary K five media. Getting those folks all trained is, is pretty significant, but they meet once a week. So they meet twenty nine, thirty minute periods per year. So is it everything they do? No. And we had conversations today about bringing more coding into our leap days for the second part of elementary, those pieces to increase that as well. And then middle, they have some sort of project lead the way course every year. So you know, they're getting exposure to those different components. And then there is a little bit on there too that's integrated into health because it's about safety and bullying. The junior level one that's in advisory advisory, the lessons we set out is just two of the five days a week so that there's still time for flex or win time or the other components, SCL kinds of things. So it's two of the five days.
Darn legislators.
Rumor has it financial literacy is next, so.
This would be superintendent Bazer's puppy right here.
Yeah, yeah, financial literacy. Wired and CTO, the back burner or the encore class, so.
And these, ironically, these standards are being revisited this summer. We're like, really? It's have a plan by July first and then you're meeting to fix them.
Don't add to it.
Yeah, they're just gonna clarify it from what I've heard.
Thanks, any questions in regards to post, your science and cybersecurity standards?
Quick comment.
I was gonna.
So I really appreciate the plan because if you think to the presentations that I presented to this group, cybersecurity is not a checkbox function. So by embedding it daily in or into multiple facets of the curriculum, I think it's our best chance for learners to adopt the mindset to exercise it every day. So I'm very appreciative of the plan because I hope that it leads to change practices, change mindsets. And ultimately, that's your first step to cybersecurity.
That was my question, Ed, is your two cents on this, is it gonna be robust? That was my question. Ed, is your two cents on this, is it gonna be robust enough to follow them into college even while they learn skills that they can?
And by embedding it, you get rid of that checkbox mentality. It's our only opportunity for success in this regard. So it's a great plan.
And having more educators be in charge of it also helps spread that. Give an example from maybe ten years ago now, when we moved keyboarding. We had a lot of educators who still didn't know that you don't double space after a period. So they were trying to correct the learners and were like, whoa, kids are right. So by having them practice it, then yeah, they learn to. So.
Good motion.
I move to author as a plan to address the computer science and cybersecurity standards.
Tricia.
One second.
John, any further discussion? Thank you for doing the work. I know it's not always easy, but this is actually a good thing coming out of this thing. All right, all those in favor of um, approving the computer science and cybersecurity standards, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. All right, then we're gonna move on to staffing.
Yes, and I think this will be a team team. I'm not sure Brittany had that on kick aside. But we do um, want to invest some of our lower greatest needs in the district. And so this has been a collaborative, by all working with different groups to try to figure some things out. So we then want to get that out.
These presentations at the top have a good start. Uh, I think the the net of this is there is no value for us uh, in having a high uh, number of unspent budget dollars for bus drivers at the end of every fiscal year. Um, and we're having such a hard time hiring bus drivers. So the school district conducted a classified market study in partnership with some of the other largest class A school districts uh, in the state. Uh, and found that we're depending on if you're looking at the beginning or the end, about fifteen percent below the public market average. Um, and so sort of looking at that data and comparing it uh, with our ongoing inability to hire drivers, um, our problem, since we spent a lot of time studying this last summer, has actually gotten worse. Um, I think this is an attempt to stop the bleeding uh, as well as trying to get us closer to a market position. Uh, so this would essentially eliminate and bring us up to market. We did not feel comfortable going any farther than that at this point, just wanting to be sensitive that we have a lot of positions that need to be adjusted to market. Um, but what again makes uh, some of our positions particularly unique is just the high volume of unfilled positions. In this case, we had, uh, we were looking at thirteen unfilled school bus drivers. So what this doesn't mean is that we have no unfilled driver positions left after this. So we can add um, we could add another half dozen uh, if this change were to be approved a- above what we currently have uh, in the transportation department's team. And revisit the conversation with the board if we wanna try to add more positions back to try to to get us back to that magic number of twelve or thirteen additional drivers. So we can resume our old walk zones prior to this year. Uh, but knowing um, that our contracted service expenses are certainly measurable. Uh, and we are behind market. We thought that this would be a good faith effort to try to more aggressively position ourselves for our in-house bus driver team because it's well known that, you know, the board's desires to get us back to those old traditional walk zones. And we just wanna make sure that we don't move farther away from that goal first. Uh, and this, this is an aggressive readjustment, which uh, we hope will help. Hope help us turn tide. Uh, this also would recognize the fact that we have been using um, bus paraprofessional positions to drive non C D L. Non C D L required bus buses mostly for special education. So this would would sort of recognize those formal um, job responsibilities uh, and put it at a grade that is sufficiently distinguished from a, from a C D L position because we certainly do not wanna create a disincentive to get your C D O when uh, obviously if we're gonna have someone behind the wheel, we want them to transport as many students as they can safely. That would be the the other piece of that. Um, again, thirteen unfilled, this would require six, which would leave us uh, with seven, which would give us some room to add back to our rigs, uh, which we're hopeful that this would help us accomplish. Uh, it would get our our starting salary over twenty dollars, which is a sort of important uh, philosophical milestone for labor seekers and get our maximum um, over twenty-two or slightly over twenty-seven. Uh, so we are hopeful again um, to help stabilize our labor force in the transportation department. Brad and his team, everyone's been working hard to make it work. And that's extended beyond transportation. Dr. Adrian, her team's been working with Jody Nelson itself. They have had an adjusted start time this year. So it's, it's really been felt, you know, district wide. So we're just trying to move as far upstream as possible um, to make sure that this is a consistent service that we're able to provide to our, to our learners.
Me, by. With starting salary at seventeen dollars, was that what it was before?
Um.
Seventeen twenty-five?
Yeah.
And then how many in-house drivers we have currently again?
We have in the, I want to say in the mid thirties. Exact number. Uh, between our, between these uh, folks who are operating as the, as um, specialized C D L drivers, plus all our C D L drivers and some trip drivers that we have. Um, we only bring people in if they're gonna be consistently working for us at the step zero one. So currently the the temp um, line was seventeen twenty at our current A one thirty-five and the zero one um, is seventeen seventy-five. That would adjust, uh, our zero one step would be adjusted to twenty dollars and fifty cents.
Twenty fifteen dollars?
Fifty.
And then what what's the max you currently pay?
Uh, currently the max hourly on a step eleven for this fiscal year is twenty-three to twenty-five. Um, and if you look ahead to next year, also with in some of the moves that the board made to be aggressive during negotiations last year by adding a step twelve. Uh, that will add an additional lane for team members as well as uh, enable a max hourly wage of of twenty-seven ten. Um, so especially for people who have been with us for a while, uh, would certainly do us pretty aggressively in the retention area as well.
Very good. Thank you. Very good.
You wanted to speak it to the supervisor. We had to submit.
Yes, thank you. Yep. Thank you, Superintendent. And then just due to compression uh, responsibility. So currently the transportation road supervisor uh, has multiple duties, but primarily they they uh, into basically individually route each and every student uh, who receives transportation services, who's on an I P uh, and provides some supervisory um, perform some supervisory duties as well. So from a responsibility, um, managerial oversight and just sort of comp compression standpoint, we tried to look at um, where um, that position might fit relative to other positions that we have in the district. Um, and felt looking at uh, the district registrar, which has a gigantic span of control, potentially touching each and every student, but still providing very personalized services. Um, that was one of several factors that led us to directing the two thirty-one. Um, just given it is both a broad and very deep position um, from a sort of operational uh, responsibility standpoint.
Some questions on transportation? The other two requests you see um, are related to title teacher for our um, Catholic schools that we support. So we are required to provide those services at uh, like schools in the area. So for J P two. Um, and we do have to provide those reading interventions. So we have a point three five title one teacher um, that we would use to support. So you see that proposed. Liz does a great job estimating the F T E will need. So that's what we're requesting based on what we anticipate in terms of supports that we would need to provide. And then in addition to that, you'll see a point five F T E from our S V M H grant. And it's called a counselor field expert. So it's a new title for us. Really, we would pair this, looking to pair it with the current half-time counselor. And because we have so many new counselors coming in and we've had quite a few through the S V M H grant. Um, we are looking for somebody that can come in and do with their maybe more veteran experience to help work with all of our counselors. So doing some of that mentoring um, and providing support for our newer counselors. So that's what the other half of this, this point five would do along with being a natural counselor for point five. So we already have that point five position. Any questions on that portion of the memo?
How do we, so how do we come up with a point three five?
Um, Liz does that based on the projections for um, learners that are in our district but are not attending our schools, but we still have to provide that intervention support.
And that's for.
Yeah, yeah, we are required to do so. Because they would be within those title one schools. We live within our boundaries and our our learners, but they're in a private school. We allocate to them.
Yeah, we've done have to do some similar things. iPad purchasing and just part of the equitable title services as a result of the federal requirement.
Yeah. It would be attending that school, yeah, to not to, but because they live within that.
Yep, and we do it every year. Um, we generally will keep that person, you know, just on a kind of exploding contract unless they choose to come and work here more full-time. But um, we usually do have that person advantage to come to work for us. That's usually the goal. But um, when it's a partial contract like this, it's pretty hard to get somebody to stay in that role for the long term. And it has been told over time, depending on number of learners. Um, but the the schools really prefer that we do it this way because then they get the best of the best. They get all the training here and support and networking versus us giving them that the allocation and they hire the teacher and try to train them. It gets very messy. Um, so the lock is loose that way. Um, but this works best for the learners to, to have that consistent training through us. Like in rate, teacher travels.
And I, I feel it does matter where they're going to school and that's what they hope for for our kids.
Exactly, yeah.
All right, any other questions with the staffing?
Oh, to approve a staffing request for twenty-four, twenty-five as presented.
John?
Start again.
Thank you, Jim. Sorry, any question? Too slow. All right, all those in favor of approving the staffing request, say aye.
All right.
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign? Motion carries. All right, we're gonna move on to the next study and do taxes.
Yes.
All right. Taxes setup for the senior housing.
Thank you, Superintendent Sully. Uh, so this was the tax incentive that was studied in the planning and development committee at our most recent meeting. Uh, there were some good questions that were asked about sort of the delta between the value and the um, anticipated construction cost. So I had an opportunity um, to attend a meeting of Fargo's economic development incentive committee. We're also joined by Mr. Jim Gilmore from uh, the city of Fargo. So thanks for joining us. Uh, Jim, uh, where they really dug into that number, uh, had a representative from uh, the state of North Dakotas. Uh, how they, uh, finance authorities sort of speak to that delta. Um, cost of compliance is probably one of the shortest descriptions of making some of these very complicated um, senior housing uh, projects work. Uh, and so after further discussion, um, the advisory committee moved it forward and it subsequently been passed by both the city and the county. Um, the the planning and development committee was generally supportive coming out of committee, but just wanted to make sure that given that this is generally farthest away from our day-to-day mission scope that the city and the county had an opportunity to um, look at at first, which they have, uh, and to get some of those questions answered related to that delta between valuation, uh, projected valuation, projected construction cost, which did get good conversation uh, at a recent meeting at Fargo City Hall. So uh, now that we've sort of answered those questions and the the process has been uh, approved by both the city and the county, uh, it comes back to us sort of the final uh, approval.
Do we have any concerns after they talked about devaluation? Any staff? Absolutely not, since they're pretty.
No, good. I mean, heard very directly from representatives of the state that they're, that they were not surprised about the delta uh, between the two. And as as part of the process, they are working with the state and were unconcerned with the information that was put together on the, for the pro forma and the application that they had assembled.
I'm just here for any questions, but we certainly need the senior housing in metro area. This would be forty units of senior housing for low income people. Um, it'd be the south of West anchors. And if they had to pay full property taxes, the project doesn't become feasible and the developer would give back all these millions of dollars that they now have available.
And then after we heard the proposal, I had to drive to West anchors just to see where the lot was. I kept saying the lot's there, like there's a lot.
It's it's unusual. The lot's never been built on.
Yeah.
It's kind of an odd shape, uh, kind of goes diagonally and the railroad, there used to be a railroad line that went up, other into that property place. I think it's that unusual shape.
All right, any questions to re-race for pilot? Who has a tier two motion?
I move to authorize requested seventeen-year pilot. We're next, next senior LLC.
Jim?
I'll second.
Thank you, John. Is there any discussion? Thank you for attending the meeting too, to make sure we get some hard questions to answer. I appreciate that. Um, all those in favor of approving um, the project, say aye. Aye to project, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign?
Appreciate your support. I should also mention, I just heard today that border states did go ahead and purchase that land.
Well, they did. We're gonna move ahead to that. Take them here. Support that was instrumental in getting the okay year run. Thank you for that also.
Great.
Awesome.
Thank you for joining. Thank you for coming.
Yes.
Action. All right. Yeah, enjoy.
Well, yes, you gotta be there.
We will.
Yeah. I'm just gonna cheer you up.
So we have a contract release for Kara.
Yeah, we did recently, like a release request. And this one's a little bit unique. So um, after further conversations, we recommend uh, supporting this request and recommending more liquidated damages.
Any questions in the lines of your motion?
I move to approve the contract release for Kara. Move, move here. Uh, without any liquid damage, liquidated damage.
Thank you, John. Thank you, Jessica.
You're running, it's mine.
Um, is there any discussion? No discussion? Um, all those in favor of approving the contract lease for their well member liquidated damages, please say aye.
Aye.
If those opposed, same sign? Motion carries. All right, um, there's likely just to have consent agenda.
Never too late.
I'll say.
Is there any um, discussion with consent agenda? All those in favor, say aye.
All right.
If those opposed, same sign? And Jenna passes. All right, moving on to you. I'm just gonna turn it to you.
Well, and I, I made ten copies, so I don't care how bored, but the rest of you, I think you already know what it basically is. And so I just wanted you to have, well, actually, you threw it up at our governance meeting that you were talking about the, and O E nine about our decision-making meetings. At the beginning of the year, when we took staff, um, and welcomed our staff back, we introduced the district decision-making leaders, which is a community. And um, again, this is somewhat flexible. Um, but it just outlined, for example, a critical example today was we have a new law around cybersecurity. So that is a district decision that we're um, where we're going to be putting those that we are going to follow that law, I guess is what I should say. But it would be a system decision about how we're going to. So how is that professional development gonna look? So um, obviously for the media specialists at the elementary level being involved in that decision, they're part of that system decision. Um, that is a system decision. So for example, at Legacy, if they decided they wanted to implement it another way, that isn't an option because the system has made the decision with input uh, from lots of stakeholders. It's a law, so that part is the district. But here is our decision-making for the um, uh, the system. That's a really good example for that. Another example would be um, the calendar committee is really part of the um, negotiated agreement that we have a calendar committee. That calendar committee has very clear, I clearly identified membership. So you have, you know, a board, board membership, you have administrative, teacher membership, parent membership. Um, so when that calendar is created, that that's actually a district decision, you know, that calendar is created. But then how we implement um, those snow days, whether.
you know, what that exactly looks like, there's some system decisions and there's some school decisions that are built into that. So I think almost every decision that we make as a as a district, there are components of of all different levels. So what we um ask the schools to do then is we ask them to also make their own map with their leadership teams about where their decisions are made. And they're categories go into what are teacher decisions to make, what are they aut- have the autonomy to? Um, what is made with teachers and administrators collaborators collaboratively? And then what are decisions that just the principal or the leadership of that school is gonna make? So for example, budgeting. Some building administrators create the budget themselves. They don't look for input, they don't, they don't ask for input. Other schools might have their leadership team weigh in. And I I guess as a district leader, we're not saying there's a right or wrong way. The beauty is not necessarily in where the decisions made, it's the clarity around everybody understanding it. So I don't think um, I don't think our employees appreciate it when we um say there'll be input, but really there isn't a decision to be made because there's either a law behind it or a rule behind it or a boundary that we can't break. And so um that is what's happened at the building level as well. And um I've gone out to some of our staff meetings and they didn't know I was going to be there and principals were having these conversations with their teacher leaders about um adjustments. Like, you know, is this still kind of where we're at? Um, we just had um Mr. Montoni was there, a conversation about uh is this resource a district decision, a system decision or a building decision or a teacher decision? And there was a lot of confusion about this particular resource. So the guaranteed viable curriculum with our 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 learner, what are they proficiency scales? Those are tight, those are a system decision made with a lot of guidance from our state because the the state standards are the state standards, we have to follow them. Those are the district or that, you know, those are required. But then the system can make decisions about um how that curriculum scope and sequence is laid out. However, the resources that would be used, um sometimes that is a building decision if they're a title one school. Or it can even be a teacher discuss decision, um whether they use a particular resource or not. So I think we have a lot more work to do on that because there was some confusion on that in one particular area. Just now we have the framework to have the conversation, communication with all of our staff.
Good place to start.
Yeah, good place to start. Yes, so.
Just wanted to know that last year I said I was in charge of whether this year because of the nine snow days, so my year is done. So somebody else. I'm not in charge of snow days next year. Because this was my year.
Well, you did a good job.
I did, that was very good.
Boxer, I said I'm in charge of whether next year, we're not having nine snow days, remember?
Yes, I do.
That's that was brilliant. Well, and even within that, the calendar committee identified which days would be a virtual learning day and which days would be, you know, an actual snow day. So even that has already been decided. So by the time it comes to the decision, it's like, are we going to be onsite or are we going to be offsite? If, you know, our first one was just a straight up snow day, a period next this year. And that was based on feedback from the families and staff members about uh how the year before had gone. Yeah. Anyway, so I'm just hearing that and um.
I like that one because.
Yes, we have graduation coming up, so um that's a better superintendent reminder um to be letting solus general switch graduation ceremonies. Oh.
You're like, you're like way of all that.
I'm just assuming I have to remind somebody. So I'll be at all three. And they'll be wearing our robes, so I don't have to do a work from change. That's great.
Nice. So our meeting will be on Tuesday then, because the twenty day is on Monday. Just as a reminder. And there.
Yep, and I updated it, but for some odd reason, I don't know why. Um, refresh on here.
Doesn't work. So we do have a board retreat next week and of course, that's gonna be the important one as we discussed with all the band here for the bomber referendum and putting together all the information to make sure you review the hand they sent out. Um, they're responding good. Two bits in there, we've seen where we come up, but uh probably more of a working workshop that we had a long time on decisions before.
Um, and also remind you as the year ends, if you um feel so compelled and you have time to reach out to your buildings that you are partnered with to see if, you know, that they be words, but they they do them at different times. So for me to tell you when all of that is, if you can, reach out and I did remind them to reach out to you if there's something that you can participate in.
Anything else from anybody? That will see everybody next Monday, help yourself to treats for Jim's birthday since Ben's chose not to come for the treat thing. Thank you for officially adjourned.
Hey, Red, on the uh, we the eye, can I tell you that I'll be giving off a scholarship?
Oh.
She won't be there.
Okay.
We'll make it real quick.